The time is now 1:30 and the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board will come to order. And we can start off, and today is February the 18th by the way. Agenda additions or deletions by the staff first?
Staff has done, Mr. Chairman.
How about the board members? Then we will move on to approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I have just one correction.
Okay.
On the first page, Item B, third paragraph, it should read, "Mr. Cruto."
Is that a necessary change?
Well, I haven't had the operations.
Is there any additional corrections to the minutes? If none, I'd like to have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item we have is public comment. Anybody that would like to speak today in a general direction of public comment, please come forward at this time. I'm opening public comment now. Seeing nobody coming forward, I will immediately close public comment. And today's item on the agenda is a voluntary annexation report. And, Tim, who's going to give that?
Sherry will be doing it.
Sherry will be? Thank you, Sherry. I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. The city received a voluntary annexation application petitioning the city council to annex a parcel of vacant land containing approximately seven and a half acres. The subject property is located on the east side of Indian River Boulevard between 37th and 41st Streets. And we did provide a general location map in your packet. We also have that map on the computer screen there to give you a visual idea of where this is located. The street address is actually 3780 Indian River Boulevard. The parcel is contiguous to the current city of Vero Beach sea limit boundary to the north. And if you look on the location map, the easiest way to see that is we've identified in the gray hatched area, the boulder line, that is the city limits line. And, you know, it's actually dark black bold on the actual colored version of the map. So you can see the subject property to be annexed is the area that's hatched. And you can see to the north of that property, it directly abuts the city limits to the north there. Adjacent parcels to the north and east are conservation lands, and they are owned by the Indian River Land Trust. And across Indian River Boulevard to the west is the hospital, medical facilities, assisted living facilities, especially south on 37th Street, to give you an idea of the bearings there. The site is currently vacant. It's undeveloped, and it consists primarily of a pond and wetlands. The parcel is currently zoned RM8, multiple-family residential, and its future land use is medium-density residential, up to eight units on the county's land use map. The current zoning and land use allow generally residential uses on the property. The property owners are requesting the annexation basically to get the highest and best use of the property because the city's development regulations, they do allow density calculations. In other words, the whole acreage of the property, the seven acres, including the wetlands, is counted as part of the density calculation. So theoretically, there would be an increase or a higher amount of density provided for the future development of the property. And that's the main reason why the owners have requested this annexation.
Is that different from the county regulations?
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah. I just want to add that basically the wetlands still have to be preserved.
Correct.
The problem is the county doesn't give you any...
Credit for it.
Bonus, if you will.
Bonus for doing that. So actually, I think our regulations are more fair than the county's regulations, but that's my opinion.
What percent of the property is wetland?
Percentage, let's see, there's a pond there, there's, I want to say maybe four, three acres, I mean, that's just, I'd have to go back and look.
It's about 50/50.
It's, I'd have to go back and look closer at the survey and just give you an actual idea, but...
Chairman, how many more units can they get from your R M?
Probably double.
Yeah, probably around double, I think it was. You have the number. Not quite that much, they said, close to it.
Close to that, yeah.
So they have an idea.
Okay, understand.
Sure, just as a quick, just quick view on the aerial, it looks like maybe a fourth of the property. That's just general, yeah.
All right.
As you all know, there's, there are statutory requirements that the state outlines in the Florida statutes for voluntary annexations. And two of the main points for the voluntary annexation is, one, that the property owners must request and consent to being annexed, and that's been satisfied. There are, we have letters to that effect from the property owners. That's also included in your pack, backup. The next major requirement is the property must be contiguous, which I've mentioned earlier, it is, to the north. It must be reasonably compact, and as you can see, it's compact. There are no, you know, single areas hanging out, areas, it's all compact. And a third is that it cannot create any enclave, and it's not going to create an enclave. You basically have direct road frontage on Indian River Boulevard. So it's fairly straightforward in that respect. It meets all three of the major or the principal requirements of being annexed. Once again, we did look at the impacts on city services and facilities and revenues. And the proposed property or the annexed property can be accommodated by most of the existing services and facilities. There's just one exception to that, the provision of the water and sewer services. The actual water main and sewer mains are not located on that property, so they would have to be expanded, extended to service that parcel. And our water and sewer department gave us an estimate of approximately how far that would be, 3,500 feet for the water and approximately 4,300 feet for the sewer. And those are located near the Indian River Medical Center, to give you an idea of that area.
But those costs, generally, most of those costs can be borne by the property.
Correct.
Well, that's what I was going to ask the question.
That's correct.
Normally, if you have to extend the service, the property owner is, you know, has to pay the hookup fee.
Correct.
Exactly, they have costs to do that.
So the cost of extending it would be borne by the owner of the property.
Correct. That's traditionally how it occurs, yes. And there is sufficient capacity in the water and sewer system to accommodate that extension. And we also looked at the current taxable value of the property and had an approximate idea of what the city taxes would be based on the current taxable value. And we've listed that in the report. There may be some additional estimated fees for solid waste collections if the property does become developed. Once annexed, the property would be all under the city's jurisdiction, except for the land use and zoning. That will require a follow-up to bring the property into our comprehensive plan and our land use, our land use and our zoning. A comparable designation, which is typically what the city does, is, would be the RM8 zoning and the RM medium residential for the future land use.
Sherry, when they, if they come in under annexation, is it subject to zoning or not? It's just an annexation period?
Just annexation there. All the other, other than our land development regulations in comp plan, which includes a comp plan, they're subject to all the other things you find in the...
Because of the annexation, once they're annexed.
With the annexation, right. So basically, when they come in, as I, and I'll just give you an update where we are, how this plays out. This project had already gotten approval of a site plan from the county.
I didn't know that, okay.
Okay, for what it was.
Okay.
So unfortunately, when they, when they come in, we will not be able to put them under our land development regulations until the comp plan has been updated.
Okay.
And the way the statutes read, the comp plan, if we submit our, what they call the evaluation appraisal report-based amendments, which we are working on now, that will trigger our ability to go ahead and do any changes, which will, at that time. So we don't have to wait around for the state to approve anything, or we have to respond to revisions to that reviewing agencies may, may give us. But it'll still be months off before that can be done. And the understanding we had is, and we've talked to, they may change their mind, is they'll come back at that time to do an amendment to the site plan. They'll want to get this project going, which they'll be able to do, but then they'll come back at a later date, once they're under our land development regulations, to pick up that additional density. So you'll be able to see the first site plan anyway. They'll come before you in a quasi-dedicial. So it's not like, you know, so we're not approving that. It'll come back before, it'll have to come back before you.
So what triggered this? Is they had a site plan, went to the county, had more units than the county would accept because of...
Yeah, I believe they didn't fight that, they were just following the rules of the county.
Right, so their option to get the number of units they wanted to...
Yes, but it'll have to be a two-stage process to do it right now.
And our existing zoning, or the zoning that would apply here, would be similar to what the county has, except...
Except for the density.
Except for that, except for the counting of full property for density.
And we handle wetlands, a little difference, but it'd still be protection of the wetlands.
Right, but what about the additional site plan restrictions we have in the city?
They'll have to follow the...
They'll have to follow our city.
Yes, when they submit the site plan, I mean, I took a cursory look at it, it looked like it would comply.
Okay.
I mean, we look, it first has to comply with the county, but I believe the way it'll be done is we make sure it'll all fit together once they come in.
But some of the major differences or setbacks and landscaping issues that we have.
So we haven't had the, you know, as I said, I just looked at it, we'll, we'll take a look at it. They clearly don't want to be out of compliance, you know, eventually on that site plan. So we'll look and see how that plays out.
Okay.
I have a question on the map. To the immediate east of the property that is still in the county, how is that zoned?
Property, if you don't, if you'll allow me, I'll go here so it's easier.
Yeah.
You're speaking about...
Yes, yeah, that's it.
Yes, that's in the unincorporated county. It's conservation lands.
Right.
It's owned by the Indian River Land Trust here and here in the city limits.
Okay, and then the rest of the land in the city at that point also is owned by the land trust?
Yes, right in here, that's correct.
So this development now is proposed in the middle of conservation lands?
I'm not sure if it's middle, it's adjacent to the north, it's adjacent to the east, it's along, you know, major arterial and here.
That angular piece, right, if you just go along Indian River Boulevard, like to the north, the north of the, right in there.
Yes.
How is that land zoned?
That is zoned, let's see, this is Grand Harbor.
Yeah.
This is medical, and I'm not sure, to be honest with you, exactly what that area is zoned.
That's what she was asking.
I don't know if it's conservation or if it's also part of something else. I'd have to verify that, to be honest with you.
Has the land trust weighed in on this annexation at all?
Not that I'm aware of, no. We typically don't.
Is there an obligation to post the property for an annexation or development?
No, no. At the next level, when it goes to city council, it's advertised, large font in the newspaper with a location map, the county's notified. There's strict advertising requirements when it goes forward to the city council for consideration.
Now, my, my other point is, we were discussing the ponds and the wetlands, and you're saying it's somewhere around a quarter of the property?
Yes, it might be a little more, you know, give or take, but it's...
Okay, what is their intent? How, are they going to mitigate?
Yes.
What is the intent?
Yes. Yes, of course, we don't have a site plan.
Right.
Yes, that would be part of the site plan review process, mitigating for the wetlands. As Tim mentioned, our code allows some clustering of units to protect more of the wetlands. And so that's a little different than when the county allows, from what our standing is. So yes, they're still going to be required to protect the wetlands and mitigate for the wetlands.
Okay, so, but in mitigating, are they talking about maybe getting rid of here and buying credits off Oslo Road or some...
Well, we're not, we're, that's getting into the site plan, let's stay out of that. My, they're going to have to put conservation easements on that, but let's not get into that kind of detail. We'll do that, when the site plan comes before you, you'll be getting into all those answers. I don't want to get into things that we haven't even discussed with the applicant, in all fairness.
Yeah, well, certainly. But my, my whole concern here is that this is being, it's got, you know, wetlands and conservation lands around it, and I'm a little concerned about wanting to develop this to the highest and best use, because in calculating the 7.46 acres, we're talking anywhere from maybe 60 to 75 dwelling units.
But you're going to see that, and I mean, the point is, there are uplands on that property. You start taking land from people without compensation, and there's, you know, there's a fine point you get into. But those are things that you'll do as a quasi-dedicial on the site when we get to the site plan approval, okay? So, you know, at that time, if you're unhappy with it, you can voice it.
Well, I look at it this way, honey, if right now the county can do whatever they want with that piece of property, if it's part of the city, then we will have a say in how that property is used.
Correct.
And so that's, we're getting a say where we wouldn't have one if we didn't, if the annexation was not approved.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, the, the site plan approval is, oh, I need to talk, talk to the applicant just a second.
What is that judicial?
Yeah.
And there's no way that an annexation is made conditional on a site plan approval?
Absolutely not, no.
You annex or you don't.
Yeah, annex or you don't, and then we, we annex, we have control.
Exactly.
That's all I'm saying.
It's my understanding, this is just a simple annex.
It is, yeah.
That's all it is, right?
Correct.
And the site plan approval, the wetlands and all that will come into play later. We're just looking at annexing into the city.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I just wanted to point out, I had a, I was having a thought process, because I was saying that the site plan would come before you, that first phase, it will, because even under the county, it wasn't administrative approval. I just wanted, I didn't want to speak, you know, to say, tell you something, and that isn't how it's going to happen. So you will see that, okay?
Go ahead, Sherry. I could continue, just to summarize real briefly, I think we've covered most of the points, but just one point that Mr. Cruto brought, Croto brought up is that one of the positives or the strengths is that we do control the development in the area and along our borders if we do annex the property. So that's one positive. And we see that, we see it as a positive, and we've researched whether the annexation meets the statutes, and it, and we feel that it does, we find that it does, and we recommend that you also recommend that to the city council.
Oh, Sherry, I, I'll be, wait just a minute, other people questions of Sherry right now?
I just have one question, just to clarify for me. If the site plan is approved, in order to connect to the sewer and water, they have to cross Indian River Boulevard, is this correct?
That's true.
That's, we understand, yes, that's correct.
At their expense is what I understand.
Right.
Well, I just had a talk.
The issue and expenses and all that are going to be, we're going to rectify, we've got to reach an agreement before we go to, before the ordinance is placed for the council, which we'll do. And usually, we require submittal of documentation on how much it costs per unit. And the city does have, the city manager and water and sewer director have, you know, the authority, well, the city manager, to, if it's too costly, then to allow, then we'd have to do a service area agreement and a bunch of other things, but it could be done that way. We just have to get the, the final numbers on it. But that's not for you to, to worry about at this point in time. But we want to rectify that, because we have another issue that's coming in the southern part of the city, where that's come up, but it's a lot different than this one. This is significant difference in, in costs here.
The statement here about the current taxable value, that property is seeing $425 a year approximately to the city?
Right, based on its...
Is that a correct figure?
Right, that's based on the current taxable value, which is $178,000.
Vacant land, yeah.
Yeah, with wetlands.
With wetlands, yes.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I have a couple of questions. These are general questions, not specific to this site, because I think we're talking about annexation, the process here a little bit. You mentioned in your presentation that appendages would make it more difficult to accept. Define an appendage on a site coming in under annexation. What would be a one that would make it unacceptable because of the appendage?
Sure. Generally speaking, if I could just sort of give you an example on this map, the statute talks about serpentine, which is sort of wavy, and fingers. So theoretically, if you had, you know, for unincorporated county, city, unincorporated county, city with fingers hanging, that is a flag. An enclave, meaning it's captured by surrounding municipality and there, it's almost landlocked, the other things like that.
If, if an example, you had a four-foot strip that ran a half a mile, and then you had a cube, that would be unacceptable, because that four foot was put in there for a half a mile.
Correct, correct.
Makes it so it's really not an integral part of the people trying to annex, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So this does not, this meets the right criteria, so all...
That's correct. It's compact, once again, and it's compact, it's contiguous, and it does not create an enclave.
Let me ask, this is another question I don't know the answer to from Vero Beach, I've been other places where it's important, but is there a way to leave the city? We have people, we've always had annexations, is there a way that these people in particular could say they won't be annexed?
Yes, they can petition to leave, to de-annex. They'd have to get approval from them.
But from the city, or do they just have to be accepted back into the county or another municipality?
Well, no, they have to be, I don't believe the county even has to get involved, I think you just, I'd have to look at our...
They leave the city.
Yeah, they can leave the city.
They can.
But it goes through a quasi-dedicial hearing. I mean, annexation is quasi-dedicial, so, you know, it'd be, what reasons are you trying to get out after you came in under, you know, and that's a possibility, if they felt that there was something the city promised them, or understanding it was screwed up by, you know, be up to the city council.
So for example, they brought their site plan, and it was difficult for them, they could...
I don't think that would be necessarily, yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking, okay.
They wouldn't have to re-petition the county to go back to the county?
No, I don't, I, I would have to check, I don't think so. I'd have to pull out the code.
I think the county's obligated to take any property that's not within a city to be part of the unincorporated area of the county. I don't think the county has a say in that. I don't know, that's why...
I don't know, but I would assume, yes.
Any quick, additional questions of staff?
All right.
Then we'll have the applicant, I'm sorry, Ken.
Thank you. For me, clarity, you talked about promise. We're not promising anything with this annexation, except for what's in this packet. They're just coming into the city, it states what we can do, that's it.
Yeah, this is, all you're doing is looking at the annexation report. If there's anything, as I said, for instance, the utilities extension, that will be done separately prior to going to the hearing. But that's not for you to, yeah, it's not under your purview for this.
A lot of time, that may prohibit them from moving forward at this time and waiting till a time when the utility moves in a direction.
Yeah, I mean, the last thing we want to do is sell them a bill of goods.
Yeah.
They may have a...
But there are times municipality promises services if they annex in a different municipality, not necessarily Vero Beach.
And we're not promising anything.
No, we already...
We're promising, we're charging them a lot, is what we're promising. Well, if they don't, if they don't redraw after our comments, so...
They can't have it for free. Additional questions of staff? The applicant would like to come forward, Bruce? There can't be swearing in here, there's nothing, no swearing in here. Okay, he's an attorney, we trust him anyhow.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bruce Barquette, I practice at 756 Becheland Boulevard, and I'm here representing the applicant. Don't really have anything to add to the staff's presentation, it was thorough and complete, and we agreed with everything they said, and hope you recommend approval, and we go onward and upward. Any questions that we can...
Questions, Bruce?
Mr. Barquette. Also, by the way, we've got the project engineer, Scott McGuire, here, if you had any questions about the site itself. Thank you.
No questions? Is there board discussion then?
I don't think there's, I think my questions have been answered. It's a simple annexation. I think the questions are going to come up when the site plan comes forward.
That's right.
I see no apparent reason we should reject this. I think it's all positive city.
I move we approve the staff recommendation for the annexation of this property at 3780 Indian River Boulevard.
We have a first, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think we can call for a vote then.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Cruto?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, welcome to the city, I hope you do well here.
Bless your paper.
The next item is Planning Department Matters, and I think that's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I've had several discussions with the city council on the vision plan and what's been done with it. There's been talk about opening the vision plan, and I said, you know, I think it's time to give you a thorough update on what the city has done in implementing the vision plan. So I prepared a report for the city council, which, it's being put in their mailbox today, but I'm going to give you all a copy of the report. The only thing I can say about the report is I, we didn't do it in, there's a blue and white way that the, it shows up a little better on the council thing, I'm not trying to give you a lower class product here, but if you have problems with it, you shouldn't have.
We understand the world. I think what he's saying is he has to be more clear with the council, because they're more difficult to understand these matters.
But anyway...
It's a superior group you have here, by the way.
I think, I think you will see on this, in the, it did go through Jim O'Connor, so he's, he's read it too, and it's a good update, he wasn't here during the vision.
He got the colored copy too?
He got the colored copy. I, no, no, he, I think he's seen a black copy, he got shortchanged too.
We're saving costs, we're saving costs.
Anyway, I just want to point out that we, in summary, we've gone through this thing of the 70 recommendation strategies in there. We've, at least 58 of them have been fully or partially implemented, I've got commentary on it. The concern the staff has had, and I voiced it on numerous occasions in the council, look, we got to get the comp plan done. We don't need to be revision, you know, getting back into the vision plan and spending a lot of money on that. It's a fine document as far as it went. We're taking that document, incorporated, making changes. The other projects, projects that have come on, the cultural arts, we're including that in the comp plan. So I'm trying to get this done, and I'm concerned that we get, you know, pulled away from the central where we need to go. Because the comp plan is the critical document, as I point out, it is the document that the land development regulations is, have force of law, and we need to really get that done. So I just got off my soapbox, I'm going to hand you this, a copy of this, so please feel free to look at it. You may disagree with some of the comments I made in there, that's fine, I'm not trying to win over a lot of people, I just want to try to win over the idea that, hey, we've moved forward on the comp plan, and we'll continue doing various elements of it. But I, you know, but I think this is a good backup, you'll see a lot of discussion on that, a lot of came from the, the evaluation appraisal report that was done in 2010, which people probably didn't read either. So, but anyway, so feel free to look at it, I mean, to call me if you got any questions. I'm going to hand this out, I think I have enough for everybody up there.
I would like to make a comment to you though, Tim.
Yes, sir.
If history is to be revisited on this, the way this transpired at the end was very difficult. There was different viewpoints being expressed from vision two than vision one, and so a lot of the issues were not totally resolved, because as the political climate changed, so changed the vision perspectives. And so this, as a document, had, was not universally accepted.
And actually, I had about four or five paragraphs getting into exactly what you brought up. And also that there was no real look at, do we have the resources to it, from financial to... We didn't, we didn't have it. It was a good, you know, even the five or plus years, I did, I took all that out, because did, I took all that out because I thought I've already, I'll make my points if you read the commentary on some of these strategies that are pretty well stated. And I think that the poster child was obviously the overlay district. Five years to do the ocean and arguments over two or three stories held that thing up for five years. And so that was a good example. There are other, there are other in there.
There were stumbling points.
And I pointed out to Honey Manous before the meeting, I said, you realize the vision plan also didn't want to have publics to move across the street to occupy 69,000 square feet. I mean, it says, you know, so I mean, there are things that needed to be worked on, and I'm not surprised. When you do a vision plan, you get a commitment, a lot of people to broad things. It's those details.
That's where the difficulty was, in the details.
Yeah, it's the details.
And over time, when that much time transpired between the day you initiated and you ended, and it was years, those things change, your views change, even your political positions change. And so this document was never totally vetted, if you want to say.
Yeah, no, it wasn't totally vetted. And I tried to do vetting during the year process and that. I know, I think, I've talked to some of the committee members who are under the original, they didn't really agree with, didn't realize they were committing to something that, you know what I mean? There wasn't universal agreement to begin with, but to move it forward, that's how it works. So I think we're over that, and to argue about that anymore is kind of a waste of time.
In actuality, in actuality, the agreement, in actuality, the agreement was a good document in general. It serves, it will serve the city well. And I think that 95% of what's in there is very positive.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I didn't mean to be negative toward the document. I'm just saying that there are some issues that were still outstanding.
And I've always stressed that. I think it's a pretty, you know, it's a nice elegant document. It lays out a thing, but it is what it is, as I point out. It only can go so far, and that's when the hard work starts on it. But it gives us a good guide path that we can use, you know. It's just changing the broad terms in there, the platitudes, as I call them, into something that's meaningful, that can be applied through both policy and regulations.
And it was a huge consensus by the people who were working on it, and everyone in the community. There was an outreach to get them involved.
Oh, it was. It was. So I think we have a good.
And to get everyone to agree on a final document, that was even more huge.
Yeah. Anyway, so please, you know, read it, and you got some comments you'd like to make me. I'm open to any kind of comments.
I think the timing for this is great. You know, there are, there is a segment out in the community. Some folks thought not very much was being done with the vision. We've had much changed out in the political arena. Some of those folks feel not too much has been done. And I think this document is good because it will show the public, we have been doing some things with the visions program, and moving forward is more to be done. And I think, and going with that said, could you let us know where you're at on the comp plan? I know it's a complicated.
Yeah, I'll bring it up on the comp plan. As I, as I told you before, I've got a consultant doing certain, a consultant's doing the housing element. They did an introduction.
Is that this sheet that you had passed out last summer?
Yeah, we've changed the schedule. We have to keep changing the schedule. And part of it is because of my workload of trying to, I'm writing some of the more detailed things to get this, but I need things on paper, and that consultant's getting stuff on paper. So they're doing the housing element, conservation, coastal management, and those. And what we told you before, we're dividing it into two documents. Basically, it'll be the background document. Unlike our current, everything's kind of mushed together. You don't know where the policies are, even though they, they show up in the background. You'd be surprised, you know, and that's unusual from communities. So we're dividing it in where you have the policy document and the, what we call the analysis, which are the facts and stuff you use to make the policies. So it'll be a separate document, and eventually we would like to get to the point where the adoption is really just the policy. So we can make changes and backup, you know, without having to go through a lot of rigmarole on that and sending it off to the state as an amendment. So what I'm going to try to do, I'd like to start moving forward. Right now, I have finished the transportation element, the background. So we haven't done the policies. I've also finished the land use element, the background, and I'm right now on the infrastructure. I've done solid waste, stormwater, and now I'm finishing up on sanitary sewer. And I'm going to kind of move over. Rob needs to give me, Bolton, the water and sewer, they need to give me more information. So I've got some questions. It's more complicated. Part of the delay is that I have to get the information, and a lot of times it's not in a format or it's been done, you know, we have to put it together. But thank God for the internet. Best thing that ever happened when it comes to doing this kind of stuff. But I'm going to try to, at least next month, or maybe March is, start bringing policies in front of you, okay, that we can start going over. So I'd like to get this movement. So we're still talking about five to six months. I don't see any way around that to get this thing all done and to get a proper vetting. It isn't fair just to drop things on you and expect you to, in one sitting, say, oh, that looks great. You guys did a wonderful job, you know, and the whole idea is to get a little participation too. So anyway, I hope that answers your question. I'm not, you know, I wish I could do it faster, but you know, as I said, we're, we're limited, and I've got demands on me to write more regulations, do this, do that, and, you know, it has to be done. And we have projects that come in, big projects like Heritage Reserve. It takes time to review and set them straight. What we like to see, I'm not looking for Levitt Town, as I keep telling the guy. That kind of thing.
Mr. McGuire, let me ask you this too. With your workload, you said five or six months going forward. Your workload is actually increasing. Are you going to be able to make that timeframe?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to make that time. I said, one of my biggest things here before I leave this place is get this comp plan done because the city has been deserving a comp plan for a long time, and they have just ignored it, you know, and I'm not trying to speak ill. It's just, it is what it was. And I think a good example was that shooting range. I mean, the comp plan made it conservation, yet they kept changing the zoning on it. It was definitely in, didn't comply. And the funny thing is, I didn't tell you, we did get a letter from the state telling us we missed our date, which was the 2nd of February, and we couldn't do amendments for six months until we submitted. Well, do you remember the amendment that you all recommended approval in the concert? Well, they, they said it was fine, go ahead. It's like one handed, the state didn't know what the right hand, but we'll, we have to hold up.
So who's going to jail over that?
Do we see it again then?
Nobody goes over jail. Well, the whole Heritage Reserve was not legal. I had to go back and throw holy water on it when I got here. I mean, it could have been easily appealed because it wasn't in the comp plan. I mean, those are the kind of things, and then people lose, they don't understand why comp plan. And you still see that here, and I'm trying to, to get to the point where we all understand how this all works together, how stormwater works in together and land use with the lagoon. One thing that the vision plan, they never talked about the lagoon.
It's never in there.
And look, that was a major item even back then. People were just ignoring it. And now it's gotten to the point that things have to be done, and I can say at least the city is trying to do its share, or more than its share, of taking care of the water quality out there. And people may argue that. A lot of times, it's a matter of money, and we all understand that. But the step program is certainly a good, and Public Works, I'm, we're pushing things. I've got in the comp plan on their long-term projects, on their stormwater, which are doing some excellent cost efficiency things to take out particulates. I mean, they've given a lot of thought. So, I mean, we're, we're there, and we're involved with the other localities in the Indian River Lagoon Sanctuary and that program, which the county refused to, for whatever reason, to be involved in. So we stepped in with those other localities to do that. So I'm very hopeful that we'll move forward on these kind of things. But these are important issues that, that I'm trying to bring up, make sure the comp plan's got them in there, and it gives some focus for the city council and the city to, you know, to look at how to resolve some of these issues. You know, other issues are a little more difficult, like housing, you know. It's never been really something on our, you know, we got to do something, but how we do it in a way that is politically acceptable is a difficult.
How are you doing as far as handling the load going, going forward? I know that you're going to be, you're busy now. You're going to get busier.
Yeah.
With your current staff.
Well, I've, to answer your question, Ken, I've, I did, in last year's budget, we were doing multi-year budgets. I did propose another staff position, and my boss's still out there.
He's just checking.
Don't tell me what he is, what he does.
Don't tell us.
But I am going to propose, I am going to propose at least a staff position upfront. I need somebody like the planning tech level to take some of the burden off. You know, the, you know, I've got Sherry doing fences. Now, come on.
But didn't you lose a planner?
I need Sherry to be working on things that I work on. That's more of an appropriate use of her time. So if we can take some of that load, it would help because we are getting a lot of applications in.
Well, with this additional $454 or something we just added to the tax base, would that help you?
Well, we got to get site approval.
Didn't you lose a planner?
We lost several planners.
Several planners.
And because of the.
And I understand that with the budget crunches and all, and what the political.
And it was during the recession, so it was nice. It's coming more apparent now.
So you're just looking for one, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bust the budget at all.
I understand.
And, you know, and as I said, I mean, my tenure here is, as I told Jim, I've had some bad choices in real estate. I may be here to the rest of my life, which might be good, maybe bad. I don't know.
That happens in Vero. Once you're here, you can never leave. I'm sorry.
That's why they call it Velcro Vero. You can't check in, but you can't check out, right? Velcro Beach is.
We're all the same.
Anyway, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I have one, one.
Yes, sir.
Honey held up this document, the City of Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan Update dated 7/12. Is this the late, the most?
No, what I'll do is give you, I'm going to give you update of our, the consultant's report, the consultant's thing. It goes in a little more detail in our new timeframe.
So if we, if we have a reference, though, this is the best reference at this point in time we have. There's no.
But it's, everything's been drawn out. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, because I have that. That's.
Yeah, I'll try to get you that. It'd be good for you to see it. I mean, we're pretty flexible on how we're moving forward with the consultant on it, and, but as I said, I just want to get this done, and.
Additional questions? Okay, let's move to Board Member Matters. Any board member have anything they'd like to bring forward today?
Not really. I did see in the paper was posted for our next meeting, the church application.
That'll be a conditional use. So that's a big site plan over at the Osceola Magnet School.
Osceola?
Yes, it will be. So just remember that.
So that's, that's the sec, that's the first Thursday in March?
It's March 3rd, correct.
March 3rd.
And I'll just give a quick update on the Arts Village. We had our little meeting last night. Our planning director attended. Our city manager and some of our council members. Went very well. Was packed house. We also had Mr. Don Cartal there, a P&amp;Z board member. Anyway, it went very well. I think the planning group presented it well. The room was very pleased with what they saw on the screen. So just a.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. It was an excellent presentation. It was wonderful. And they are looking for a lot of volunteers, so I think I have to get ahold of Ms. Lyon to find out if there's no conflict of interest in volunteering for any of those positions. But they are looking for volunteers, and they really need them. So if anyone is interested, I would recommend them talking to Peggy Lyon also and seeing what it is that we can do, if anything, to help them.
It'll be very, very important to recruit residents of that district to participate. That's the primary source of volunteers, the impact. And they're talking about creating a, an organization of residents there so that they have a basis for communicating. So it's very important to recruit people who live in that community now.
I agree. And one of the questions I have most often asking me, Tim, and since we have another member in our audience back there that might want to speak to this also, I get a lot of questions on the diesel plant, and I have really no.
Well, we just, we did, well.
Please, I was hoping you would move like that, so please come forward. He was getting up to leave the room. You know, Tim, you sit down. He's, we got the boss coming for it now, remember?
Yeah, hey.
Although Tim was one of the reviewing team.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Tim. Now I'm sorry.
So he knows as much about it as I do. But we did, we received three proposals. We reviewed those proposals, and each member, we had four members of the review team, myself, Ted Fletcher, Tim, and Monty Falls. Ted Fletcher was there because it's actually Electric Department property.
Okay.
And so we reviewed the proposals. We had each one of the people come in and make a presentation to us. We gave them some questions in advance. For example, we wanted a business plan explained to us, and we even put the word in the question as, act like we're your banker, you know. You're convincing us we're ready to invest in this property. And so we had three proposals. We ranked them one, two, and three. The brewery was, Integro is the name of the company, was ranked number one. The distillery, what was the name of that?
Treasure Coast.
Treasure Coast Distillery was ranked number two, and the Ross, Ross, who?
Ross Powers.
Powers, who really had more of an art theme, was ranked third. But after review of their business plans, their expectations of what they had of the city, our ranking, I think, is very, very justified. As a matter of fact, the top rank gave us two options. One is that we deal with some of the environmental issues with them, or for $150,000, they will take as-is. And so that'll be another issue that we have to sort of work through. But I think there were very, three very good proposals, and I think our rankings can be well justified as to the way we did it. And the business plan that was for the number one rank was outstanding. I mean, he filled in the numbers, gave us where his revenues were going to come from, where his expenses were going to go. He has experience in the City of Vero Beach. He has done renovations down on 14th Avenue. He's also doing the one out by the Kmart. He owns that property. He did the bowling alley, and everybody remembers the bowling alley used to be pretty rough. He actually took it under his own wing now and has his own little corporation running a bowling alley. As he explained to us, he had never been in the bowling business before, but he went out, learned how to do it, and brought the right people in to do that. The same would apply to the brewery. He does have a brewmaster that he's already engaged in contract with, that is well-known in the industry, also relatively local in St. Lucie County. So it, I think it's something that we, and we'll be making a recommendation to the council on March the 1st.
If he accepts this, would that negate his plan for on 14th Avenue, where he had one time a proposal to do something there?
More than likely, he will not have two breweries. The property on 14th Avenue has some real challenges for a brew, and I went out and talked to the folks that are doing the brewery at, on the airport property. We have a tenant out there. They're going to be more of a wholesale than they are retail at that point. He's going to be more retail than wholesale. But the type of equipment that needs to go into the buildings, the building on 14th Avenue, they would have to specially modify the equipment to go into that building. You just need those tall ceilings and that kind of stuff. So it's an interesting industry. They can accommodate whatever you need, but the smaller you make it, the more expensive, plus modification of equipment.
Did you or Tim get a tap pass at all if the thing takes, ever takes effect?
We'll probably have to pay our own way, but that's just the way the deal goes.
Were the, were the, were the proposals ranked significantly different? I mean, was the ranking from one to three a very large gap, or was it just minor changes, minor differences?
It was actually unanimous among all four.
I'm just saying the gap between one and three was, were all three of them determined to be adequate?
It was pretty substantial.
Yeah.
And a lot of it really was on the interview. I mean, the number one ranked had a business plan, made his presentation to us, and really did talk to us like we were, you know, his bank. The number two rank has a fairly good business plan, although he didn't present us with any numbers. Everything was sort of blank, and this is what I anticipate.
He told how much money he'd make from selling cakes.
Oh, yeah.
Learned all that.
Yeah. He told us about the per bottle and how many bottles he was going to manufacture, but he didn't give us a document, documented what he was, he just stood there and said, and he had never been in the distillery business either. He did have his own financing as well did the number one ranked. The number one ranked guy is ready to write you a check. The number two ranked guy was ready to write a check. The number three ranked guy, he was still going through the banks. He did have a couple references of banks, but they needed clarification on the environmental issues, and he would have to go and make sure of his due diligence, that he would qualify for the bank loan.
I think the other thing was on the number one, not only did he have money to pay upfront for the property, he claimed he also had money to do the 2.5 billion or whatever it was in site improvements. So without having to go, you know.
But I've been getting a bank.
Yeah.
He's going to pay out his own.
So he had some money.
And he has like three or four different corporations that he has developed, and every site becomes a different corporation for you.
Now, we've been working for a while trying to create, you know, we're talking about the arts neighborhood there and, you know, building that whole thing. And the third proposal, I understand, was an arts-based proposal which would fit into what we're trying to do with that whole, at that whole area in the city.
Actually, all of them would fit into that, in the fact that they were points of destination, which is what we were looking for. He's going to have a brewery that will actually have a pub-type atmosphere in there, so it's an attraction in that area. He also was planning on, and he's sat in on some of the cultural council meetings and reviewed the plans. He was very well oriented with what we were doing and what our goal was. He plans to use the engine that was in there, and so he really addressed all those issues and seems to, not use them as manufacturing, as a construction.
He needs to make his own power?
Well, you never know. But, but he just, he did know that we were looking for something. We didn't want an office building. We didn't want a gas station. We didn't want anything that, like that. We were looking for a point of destination that would bring interested parties down and sort of click with what's going on on 14th, and I think he meets that dimension.
It will be a sale and not a lease, is that correct?
Absolutely. We're, well, now, I'm not one of those five voters, so I can't say that. I will tell you, though, is trying to operate these leases on part of the city, it's a major challenge.
I have a question, sir.
I have a question, sir, hypothetical question, hypothetically, the city approves contestant number one based on his plan, and that plan, the sale is made, the plan starts to unfold in the development stage, and then the plan changes, either because of the financing falls through, or the concept changes, or could even be that the lender goes into default, the, and it's necessary for that owner then to change the plan, how does that affect the thought process here, and there's no guarantees that, that even if he does invest $2.5 million, that it's gonna stay a brewery?
He has agreed that he would put conditions on the deed restrictions as to the use of the land, now, it would be short-term, it would be five or seven years, and those were the numbers we threw out when we were doing the interviews, and he had no problem with that in doing it, we all understand land use over time, and especially you guys can change, you know, 10 years out, but what we were looking for is that safe haven, is it five years, seven years, whatever the time is, that we know that the brewery's gonna be built and the brewery will be operational, at least for a period of time, to find out if it's functional there.
And will there be a timetable as far as required breaking ground?
Oh, yes, that'll be agreed upon in the sales document, and he has agreed to that as well, as a matter of fact, all of them put forth the timeframe in which the steps would be made, and we can make those terms of the sale as well.
Right, because his building on 14th Avenue now has been gutted and just sits there.
Correct, and he had, well, Starfish that was coming up out of Fort Pierce that was gonna go into the building, and that fell through, they stayed down in Fort Pierce, and it's probably because of the type of building that was looking at, and you're right, he, you know, at one time, he said, well, if he could get the diesel plant, then that's where his brewery would go, if he doesn't, he would go back on 14th, and then I read in the newspaper, he has not told me that, well, I'm not gonna do it on 14th, but I don't know what he would do there, I just know that he's had success on other buildings and everything, he seems to have started, eventually he gets finished.
I guess, with that being said, Mr. City Manager, the building on 14th Avenue, 'cause this came up last night, 'cause people already knew that there was a top bidder, I mean, news travels fast through this community, it's amazing, it's quicker than the internet.
Especially when you have a public meeting.
Anyway.
We're very transparent.
Concerns with the surrounding businesses, the, we call it the old post office there on 14th Avenue, the paint was taken off, it was clean, you know, stripped down, there's weeds growing around, it's been like that for a number of months, people are wondering, well, if this particular individual won the bid, are they gonna treat the diesel plant the same way and get into it and leave it go into deterioration? Now, the old post office, you, I think you said this particular person that won the bid, each thing is an individual corporation there, from what I'm understanding from you, they're in financial pretty good shape, in my humble opinion, a coat of paint on the building while you're waiting wouldn't hurt, you know, to help the rest of the area, especially if they wanna be infused into what we're doing in the downtown with the Arts District, having a building in shoddy repair sets a bad taste for other investors that wanna come in, so I don't know if you can do anything, maybe you can talk to them a little bit and at least put a coat of paint on that one and mow the grass around it, it would set a nice tone.
I'll go ahead and talk to Michael Richter.
Yeah.
I think part of what he's probably waiting on before he puts any more investment into that property is to make sure this deal goes through, because that was my understanding, when he saw this came available, that's, and Sailfish Brewery had the issues, and Jim pointed out the low, you know, the cost, that's probably what he's held up, Michael's a fairly decent guy to work with, I'll talk to him and see if he could do something on that, because you're right, we don't wanna go on too long, that it's sitting there is...
If you remember what was there prior to that, just scraping the building looks better than it used to look, by the way, that's an upgrade, if you want to know the truth.
Well, it's, according to what the business community there sees, the way it stands now, it doesn't look very good, even with the scraping, and I think it's been about a year that it hasn't been kept up, my point is this, and I don't wanna get into it any further, a coat of paint wouldn't hurt, no matter if it's just a nice coat of paint to hold it until you decide what you're gonna do, and I think Mr. McGary's got that, my next question to the city manager, timeframes, if all this works out with your top bidder, what kind of timeframe is gonna be built into the specs where they have to break ground and get started?
That's gonna be subject to what the expectations are on the environmental issues, we have a consultant, they're doing the test, we've already put the test wells in there, so we will have a much better view at that point when we can sit down and negotiate the timeframes, but, that being said, it depends on which alternate we take, if we take the top bidder, if he becomes responsible for the environmental issues, we can much more pin him down for his timeframe, 'cause he's already hired an environmental consultant, he gave us a report where they've reviewed everything that the city has done, so we can't have somebody tell us they were left out in the cold, and so he has a pretty good feel for if he does the environmental, when he can get it done and what it takes to make that happen, if the city still retains the responsibility environmental, then we will have to give him some type of certification that he can go in and do whatever he wants to do, we have been told by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that if you took the 05 site plan, which was the parking lot and all this, and put that onto that site now, we wouldn't be in this discussion today, it would be resolved, it'd be gone, it'd be done, and so it's gonna have to be sort of retrofitted, but that'll be part of what we do as we go through the discussion of the environmental, and I would like to have Sarah Whitaker, who is our consultant, you know, involved in those discussions.
And prior to council making the decision with this timeframe, 'cause I'm sure they're gonna probably ask these questions, this could take, let's say for the sake of argument, it could take six months, it could take a year or three years, and that would be nice to know when they, when they actually can break ground.
Well, once he gets ready to break ground and once he gets all the contractual part, and he may take 60 to 90 days for due diligence before he gets started, but he wants to get the thing up and running as soon as possible, 'cause he's gonna have $600,000 invested and no return, so he's, and it is his sole business that he's gonna go into, so I think it'll be pretty quick, but we will negotiate that, as I recall, and Tim, didn't he say something about a year he was expecting to be able to?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was about a year to be fully...
He would actually be brewing beer.
Yeah, I wanted to point out something else, that I've gotta look at what he's intending to do, but I believe we're probably going to have to put a brew pub as a use, because it, so there's no problems whether it goes beyond the retail that he's distributing a lot, which is not a problem, we told him that, we would've done it for the distillery too, and it's something we should have in our ordinance, you know, these microbreweries are, they've been new on the scene throughout the country, they're great for attracting people and all that, but a lot of cities, you know, are kinda retroactively having to put ordinances in place to deal with them, and this is our first, it's easy in a manufacturing zone, which is the Walking Tree Brewery up at the airport, but in an area that is the CBD, we really don't have it, so we need to put something in there, and I don't see it as a problem, I told him we could do that.
Will we be getting a site plan?
Yes, you're gonna, this thing will have to go through you all, and it's gonna have to go through the, well, it's an existing building, but it'll bring new uses, it'll probably go through, it's gonna have to go through you, it's been a long time, but the H, the Historic Preservation Commission's also involved, remember, this is a protected building, so it complicates it a little more.
Once the, if this goes through and your top bidder takes the property, and you turn, turn everything over to the individual, can the individual, excuse me, in three or four years tear the building down?
No, that would be part of the terms that we'll put in the deed restrictions, 10 years from now, could he tear it down, the answer's...
Well, he'd have to go through the historic preservation thing, and I think that would be hard, because it's on the local, it's not just the national register, it's on our local, and that's, the local register makes it very difficult, they would have to show the building has gone into total disrepair, well, guess what, we're gonna be holding them a bunch of standard, it'd be a little hard to allow them to do that, because once you're under the local protection, you have to maintain that historic, so it's very difficult to get, once you're, and that's why people don't wanna be designated, I mean, basically, that's one reason they don't wanna be designated.
Of course, the other side of the coin is demolition by neglect is always the option.
Yeah, well, then there, it's supposed to be an enforcement action, you're right, but having dealt with it in the Keys, where we had numerous occasions of that, you know, hurricanes that, winds that were a little stronger than the hurricane actually showed, you know, that's, oh, that's, yeah, been there.
Microbursts, you know, there are things called tornadoes in the middle of hurricanes, you know?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, you know, they're not...
My other question, if you're allowed to say, could you tell us what the top bid is, and once you give us that information, how much is the city actually going to make, or are we going to be in the hole, especially with if there's any further mitigation?
Ken, if you take our entire investment in the building as to what we've done for mitigation, cleanup and all that, we're gonna be in the hole from whoever the bid, but he was the second highest bid, I think his was 625, as I recall, but if we take the option where he takes as-is, then we could be getting just a little under 500, now, those numbers are still negotiable, I mean, he put in a bid for it, but when we sit down and start talking about the terms and conditions and what our expectations are, all that is subject to some negotiation, but I hope somewhere in the neighborhood of 500,000's what we'll get out of it, but just to put it in perspective, that drilling that we're doing out there and the monitor, the first set of monitoring is about $30,000, so the city, from the invoices that I have seen, have somewhere in the neighborhood of 6 to 6.5 hundred thousand dollars in it, that's based on when, oh, Jim, the utility director was here that started the environmental monitoring and stuff.
I guess, too, I understand, you know, the past costs, you know, we're never gonna get that back, but going forward, would we incur extra costs after we sell the building? Or have costs that are hanging, let's say for the sake of argument, everything's done now, it's getting ready to turn over the paperwork, are we gonna be short, we're gonna have to shell out, let's say, anywhere from 50,000 to 300,000 to make this thing work for this buyer?
That's, those are the two options, if you look at the mess we're into with the lease on the property that we have today, a lot of that is because our tenant had a Phase 2 done, now, we already had a certificate from the state that said no further action required, his Phase 2 went in and found some dirt samples adjacent to the building, and his monitoring well found, they're very minor, what I'm being told by our consultant, very minor and nothing compared to what we've already done on the site, and we have already had test wells surrounding the site, so we show no leaching off of the site, so it's not moving to any other properties, as a matter of fact, the test wells down there now are probably 20 feet from the building, and we're putting like four of them in there to sort of make sure that we know where the containment is, and, but again, the terms and condition as to what our exposure, you know, and I've said this during some of our discussions, is that if we can get out of this thing and have as-is sign-off, hallelujah to me, I mean, it's one of those, but is there $150,000 worth of remediation necessary, probably Sarah Whitaker would probably say, no, there isn't, but let's say a year down the road, he decides to change his mind, and he goes and does another test well and says, well, look, you guys didn't tell me the truth, and so we get back into where we are today, and so I like a nice, clean contract as opposed to...
So we can get a nice, clean contract where it cannot come back on us?
Based on his proposal, yes, we just, it's a function of money.
He's proposed to take on all risk for any environmental issues at a price.
At a price, that's correct.
If my memory serves me correctly, there was a gentleman when I first moved here that said he'd buy the property as-is and we didn't sell it, and we set, and we went through all that process and all this time and all this money's lost, we could've had this done, I don't know what kind of property it would've turned into, but the city doesn't do well, in my opinion, when we try to manage things with leases and stuff, it's better to let the, let private enterprise do what private enterprise does best and regulate them according to what the city's needs are.
One of our challenges as a city is that we not only think about what the sales price is, we try to think about what is the use gonna be, and when you do that, you're in the development business, when you do that, you're putting restrictions on a potential property owner, and so the price goes down, I mean, that's just the nature of the beast, and it's sort of like talking about the golf course at Dodger Town, we start saying that, hey, we need to make sure that it congeals with the community or whatever the case may be, then that drives the price down, and the only true way the city has found historically to do that is by leasing, you know, we say, okay, we can lease the property, and now we know what's gonna go there, and now we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to get out of one of those, but fortunately for us, the post office is paying that litigation on our lease, so we're making it up.
But let's not lose sight of the investment that the, that the previous lessor had in that property.
We have a very good question about how much money he has in that, now, he's saying it's a million dollars, you know, you could probably find a contractor to put the bricks on the outside of that building, there aren't, there is no floor in that building, those are nice windows, I agree, but a million dollar window? So, you're right, I mean, we do have to take that into consideration, but at the same time, that was a business risk, he came in and said to the city, here's my plan, you give me this property, under the terms and conditions that he agreed to sign to, and I'll go out and make this happen for you, he went out, didn't make it happen, nor did he pay the lease.
And that's, that's correct, also, it was a very long lease, and in the past, the city had a habit of doing that, and they really didn't spec in, okay, you say you're going to do this, that's fine, we'll give you a break here, but there's timeframes, and that was not done with those type of leases, and through the years, the city's corrected that, it's like you're hearing from our city manager now, going forward, they got some stipulations in there, but basically, at the end of the day here, what I think a lot of people are looking for, once you end this, it's ended and it doesn't come back on the city, you know, it's cost us a lot of money, you know, for this.
Cut your losses and move on.
That's the key.
It's like a bad spot.
If we've been there and done that, that's it all we want to, it's somebody else's turn.
Mr. Connor, thank you, that was a nice presentation.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
I could've done it.
Oh, sure, but when your boss did it for you, you didn't make any mistakes at all, you can't, see, he was just preparing.
Sure, I got a council meeting next, so...
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for letting him come forward. Any additional board matters? Looking for, ready for an adjournment?
I'm moved.
It's adjourned, thank you.